The Andover City Council Meeting on February 27th. Order, we'll start off with roll call to my left, please.
Brian Schwann, Councilmember.
Caroline Hale, Councilmember.
Troy Tabor, Councilmember.
Ben Lawrence, Mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Councilmember.
Greg Schneider, Councilmember.
Mike Warrington, Councilmember.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Jennifer McCosland, Assistant City Administrator.
J.T. Claus, City Attorney.
Les Mangas, Director, Public Works.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Mark Deter, City Administrator.
All right, item three is invocation. I see Pastor James Gillespie back here with us from Andover Baptist. Thank you for joining us.
It's bow and prayer, please. Dear only Father, the council and those gathered here come before you this evening to do business on behalf of the residents of Andover. And while there is a measure of accountability to the citizens of this city, ultimately, there is ultimate accountability to you. With this in mind, God, may tonight's decision be your decisions, and may they bring to you glory and honor. May they be imbued with your wisdom and with your guidance. May you also protect the citizens of Andover, the children, the families, the individuals, the churches, and businesses within her. May the schools here be places of safety, peace, and true knowledge. May the government and those who are part be good stewards of the authority you have allowed them to have, and may they and their families too have your divine protection. May your protection and guidance also be upon the police and fire departments as they seek to protect this community. Again, Father, may Andover be a community where you are found in its midst. We thank you, we praise you, and we ask these things in the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
If you would stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Please, not all at once. Okay, I will close the public forum and move on to the acceptance of the agenda. I don't see anything additional.
Mr. Mayor, we had Westar Energy on here to make a presentation, but they won't be here tonight, and then we added the bids for the paving project at Prairie Creek. And we also have a contract related to our amphitheater entertainment that's been put into your packet as of today.
Okay, so the agenda in the packet is correct.
That is correct and completed.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. All right, motion by C.R., second by Greg, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item number seven. I have a plaque I would like to give out this evening. As a lot of you know, Deputy City Clerk Paula Bab, sitting right over there, has been working towards being a certified municipal clerk. Lot of work to that, a lot of studying, a lot of training, and she got her done. So, if you join me at the podium, I would like to present to you your plaque. All right, so, here it is. I just want to say, you can have it. That's yours. I just want to say, it's been a long road for you. I mean, I remember when we hired you, and you expressed some interest in this, and it's not easy, as Susan can attest to, and there's a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of legal stuff that you've got to work through and you've got to be on top of. The City Clerk, for some of you that don't know, is responsible for every single piece of paper that's generated in the city of Andover. That's a lot of paper. Now luckily, we're getting some of this on microfiche and on the computerized and everything these days, but congratulations. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say thank you to the council for the opportunity to go to the training and to the classes. A lot of people don't get the opportunity, and so I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome. Another presentation this morning tonight, Police Department has some awards, I believe.
Yes, sir, we have an award that we want to give out, and I'm going to ask Captain Buchanan to come up and give that award.
I'm going to have Estro Smith come up here with me, please. This award we're going to give tonight is very rare to give this. We haven't given it that often since we've had this type of award. And it's a Community Service Award, which is awarded to any member of the department who displays outstanding service by achieving success in a difficult community project, program, or situation, or through their involvement either on or off duty in community projects or programs, which improves the quality of life for citizens in Andover. Such conduct must be distinguished by the department member or bring favorable recognition to the department by high degree of professional accomplishment and/or initiative. The citation goes on to say, "NPO Tia Smith demonstrated her compassion for the community this past holiday season when she worked with the department to identify two families in Andover who needed assistance during the Christmas season. NPO Smith worked to ensure the program was a success and that both families received the items intended to make their holiday a joyful, including both food, gifts and food, when it would not otherwise have been. In addition to the two families, Tia identified for assistance through the Andover Police Department program, she identified a third family who she assisted in making contact with an outside organization to help fulfill their needs during the holidays. Earlier in the year, NPO Smith was asked to verify the residency of some students who had recently moved into the Andover School District. As a result of her work on that request, she identified a family that had no beds for the children who were attending the school where NPO Smith was assigned as a school resource officer. Tia worked with other officers, community members, and businesses to locate and secure beds and bedding that could be delivered and set up to help the family with their living situation. NPO Smith, along with three other members of the department, met at the store where the beds were donated from the person who delivered the beds to the home. The officers set up the beds and ensured that they met the needs of the family. In addition to the brief descriptions provided above, NPO Smith has worked numerous community events while representing the Andover Police Department in promoting the department's three pillars of public service excellence: compassion, integrity, and commitment. Therefore, having met the requirements of general order M-1218 as recommended by the Awards Board and approved by the Chief of Police, NPO Two Smith, Tia Smith is awarded
He told me I had to speak. I'm very honored to receive this award tonight, but none of it would be possible without the support of my department and the community that is here in Andover. Andover comes together, and it was very easy to do my job here because of it. So, thank you to the department, and thank you overall to the entire city for their willingness to be here for others.
Mr. Mayor, at the risk of not having any of our officers ever come to another city council meeting, I'm going to ask Captain Schroeder to come out and come up and give out the second award.
Are you saying you tricked them all again?
Pretty much.
Thank you, Chief. Lieutenant Steve Harriman to join me up here, please. You've been representing for the whole council before.
It is my honor tonight to introduce to you the Andover Police Department's 2017 Officer of the Year, Lieutenant Steve Harriman. In May of 2017, Lieutenant Harriman was selected by Chief Keller to be the acting captain for the department at the resignation/retirement of Captain Justin Phillips. Lieutenant Harriman readily accepted the challenge and jumped right in getting things done. Lieutenant Harriman maintained the role and responsibilities of acting captain over the next four months while continuing to also handle his other additionally-assigned duties until the captain's position was officially filled in September. Lieutenant Harriman did an excellent job juggling the tasks and responsibilities assigned to him during this period. Lieutenant Harriman has been with the Andover Police Department since September of 2001, and his knowledge and experience are extremely beneficial to the department. In addition to his duties as acting captain, Lieutenant Harriman also continued to attend to his extra assigned duties, including vehicle maintenance coordinator, mobile video recorder system manager, and toxalyzer custodian, member of the accident review committee, and the chair of the department's safety committee. During this time, acting captain Lieutenant Harriman oversaw the purchase and installation of the department's new video recording package that included the replacement of 26 body worn cameras, 16 in-car cameras, four interview room camera systems, and one automated license plate reader. This was a lengthy process and required a lot of Lieutenant Harriman's time and attention. Lieutenant Harriman actually was responsible for a good percentage of the installations, as well, including the cameras in the four interview rooms. In addition to the department's camera system replacement, Lieutenant Harriman was also primarily responsible for the outfitting and modification of three new police vehicles, as well as supervising the maintenance of the department's 21 vehicles, which entails overseeing all repairs, oil changes, et cetera. Lieutenant Harriman demonstrated on a daily basis during the past year that he is committed to the Andover Police Department and the department's core values of commitment, compassion, and integrity. Therefore, for his actions, efforts, and attitude demonstrated on a daily basis during the past 12 months, as nominated by the Administrative Assistant Becky Page and NPO Mike Hampton, recommended by the Awards Board and approved by the Chief of Police, Lieutenant Stephen A. Harriman is awarded the 2017 Officer of the Year Award.
Speech?
Yeah, the speech would be, "I hate you."
He's pointing at chief, let's a record reflect. He's pointing at the chief, not up here.
Thank you very much, thank you to all the people in the city, thank you to all the members of the Police Department who make this kind of stuff easy. Thank you very much.
On a side note, this is Lieutenant Harriman's second Officer of the Year Award. Okay.
Let me give you another side note. Lieutenant Harriman was one of my first hires as mayor.
Okay, at the risk, at further risk to my own safety, I ask Captain Buchanan to come up and give out our final award tonight.
This one, I do have the honor of presenting, and I need my wife, if you would, to take pictures. Come here, Becky.
Told you I'm in trouble.
This is your 2017 Civilian Award winner, Civilian of the Year Award. As it states, Becky Page demonstrated continuous effort to substantially improve the mission of the Andover Police Department while serving as administrative assistant to the Chief of Police during 2017. Through the year, Ms. Page performed many tasks that directly supported the officers and other civilian staff members of the department. She took a very proactive role in dealing with identifying, ordering, and issuing pertaining to the selection and transition to a new department uniform. This included insisting on ordering and directly handing the issues of wrong sizes and the wrong product sent by the contracting company. Ms. Page organized meetings as well as participated in many community events which featured the Andover Police Department. These events include the Police and Fire Festival, Clint Black Concert, National Night Out, Greater Andover Days, Safe Halloween, Phila Cruiser, and the project to raise money for needy families during the holiday season. Becky can always be relied upon to be the first one to volunteer for a new project, regardless of what it is, and especially if it involved the public. Ms. Page's efforts to her family, her daily duties, have reflected highly on the department, as well as the department's image, and contributed to this better city of Andover. Therefore, for her actions, efforts, and attitude demonstrated on a daily basis during the past 12 months, as nominated by NPO Mike Hampton, recommended by the Awards Board, and approved by the Chief of Police, Administrative Assistant Becky Page is awarded the 2017 That's all we have, Mayor, thank you.
Certainly. All right, we will move on to item number eight, and we have some presentations this evening, I believe. First up will be the YMCA.
Okay, hello there. My name's Holly Ajaj. I'm the Corporate Wellness Director at the YMCA, and I help to oversee our wellness programs at our worksite partners. City of Andover happens to be one of those partners, so I'm going to talk just a little bit about how you guys did with your program last year in 2017. I promise I will try not to take up too much of your time. There are a few slides here, but I won't read every word, I promise. So, your program is called Healthy, Wealthy, and Wise, and I'm clicking, and I'm not able to go to the next slide. There we go. Here's your wellness committee, your current wellness committee. There's a nice spread of employees from different areas, from a couple of the same areas throughout your organization, which makes it really nice for your program because you have nice representation there. And I'm going to go ahead and move on here. With your, you guys have an incentive program, and every year, the employees that participate in the incentive program set up a goal with our health coach, and they meet with the health coach four times within the year to kind of keep up with their goal and see how they're doing. And at the end of the year, they decide together whether or not they have achieved that goal. You had 55 goals set by 65 percent of your employees, and 36 percent of those people who participated achieved their goals. And then at the end of the year, a gift card was awarded to Tia Smith at the employee appreciation event. So, something that happened that was new for you guys this year was the Columbus Day Wellness Fair, and seemed to be a success. Had quite a few activities, biometric screenings, golfing, pitching, machine volleyball targets, et cetera, quite a few vendors as well. Lunch was also provided, and I think most of your employees were pretty excited about that fair, and their plans to continue that next year as well. So, also annually, with the YMCA, we put together an annual onsite wellness screening. So, you had 43 employees participate this year compared to 2016. Nutrition, weight, and sleep risks were all lowered, which is really great, and you had 24 people in your cohort report from the years 2014 to 2017. Those 24 people all participated in each of those years, and you can see here with the fitness and activity, the blood pressure, the cholesterol levels, and the glucose were all improved by almost about 50 percent, just kind of on average. So, cohorts doing really well. This is your membership utilization with the YMCA, and you are very steady for the most part, not any huge ups or downs in terms of memberships and gate usage, and average check-in for each employee. You have a couple of really amazing success stories, and I won't read, there's about four slides of text here, which I won't read all of that for you, but they're really pretty profound stories. This particular employee weighed 350 pounds, and like he said, felt like crap daily. And he was also struggling with nausea, anxiety, he was having dizzy spells, he felt sick. And so, he went to the doctor and realized that he needed to take some pretty extreme measures to start getting better. The nurses, when he went to the doctor, pretty much thought he was going to have a heart attack because his blood pressure was 220 over 180. So, pretty critical there. So, he's worked with the doctor to take blood pressure medicine and also discovered he had celiac disease, so started to change his diet as well and cut out caffeine. What he realized, aside from the fact that that was pretty traumatic, was that upon the birth of his daughter, he really wanted to make a difference for her as well in his health. And so, even though he hated running, and there were some exercises that he didn't, just didn't like, he worked with his brother to figure out one that he did like and started doing MMA classes with him. So, since that, he has dropped his weight. I think we had, I think the total on that was, yeah, it was, I think I want to say in the 60, 60-pound range. I didn't do the math on that, but he's lost a significant amount of weight, and has been also working with Jamie and with the wellness program as well. He feels like setting those short-term goals have really helped him as well, which is something that we do, kind of that maintaining, making sure that the goals are attainable, and so, is feeling much better now. So, that's success story number one. What evidently that you guys started a Dave Ramsey Smart Dollar Program, this is before I came onto my position, but that program crossed over into 2017, so we went ahead and included it here. Another reason I wanted to include it is that we have an update to the success story from last year. So, basically, the Smart Dollar was kind of a financial wellness training program. Employees saw good results with that. You had about 31 employees enrolled. And Michael signed, this was his Smart Dollar success story from 2016. Last year, at this time, he had paid off $16,000 in debt, and so, just that was a great success story as a result of that Dave Ramsey Smart Dollar Program. And if we go to the next slide, this year, he is completely debt-free and had started with around $50,000 total in debt. So, he has really worked to free up that debt for himself to a significant degree, and is also very thankful as well. He said it was the easiest mathematically and the hardest in terms of lifestyle change that he had ever done, but he wished that he only would have started sooner. And was also very thankful for the program, and it also says if anyone has any questions or is looking for advice, please don't hesitate to have them contact him. So, what we do at the end of our program year is I sit down with Jennifer, and we talked about how the year looked, and we come up with new goals for 2018 based on what we saw in the numbers for the program last year. So, this year, we're going to strive for 50 percent participant success in meeting that annual individual incentive goal. Goal number two, we're going to increase repeated one-on-one coaching interactions so that we can develop stronger relationships and help those people that may have only seen Jamie once start to make a little more progress. We are also going to try to start highlighting a few more action steps with our committee so that we're promoting well, and we're communicating well, and we're generating an engagement for the program. Also, we plan to increase challenge participation to 20 percent by not only utilizing the Y challenges, but also finding challenges that are fun and exciting and engaging that might be unique for you guys. And then our last goal was to contact 100 percent of the employees with one or more high-risk values from the 2018 screenings. And I think we did, we went ahead and did that anyway this year, but we'll strive for that goal again going forward. As far as the services that the Y provides, this is just a list here. These are things that we're currently providing to you: monthly healthy lifestyle coaching, committee meeting facilitation, corporate wellness challenges, kind of skipping down there, we've got presentations, we've started webinar presentations this year. We've got a newsletter that comes out, and recipe cards, and corporate membership, and biometric screenings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, anyway, thank you for letting me go over the program with you, and I hope to see you guys do even better this next year.
Comments, questions? Thank you. All right, Suzy, you're up next.
I'm Suzy Thane. I'm the Executive Director of Sunlight Children's Advocacy and Rights Foundation, or SCARF, and I want to thank you for allowing me to come here and speak to you all again. And as I look around the room, every time I come here, I feel like I'm coming back home. And when I, I have to single out one situation, so I'm looking at Les, and he was very instrumental in a lot of our work before we started building the children's home here in Andover. And it was not always very pleasant, you know, we had all these, I was not sure if the home was going to have indoor plumbing, because we had all those issues. And I will tell you along those lines, and some of you may have read about it on our Facebook page or whatever, but we did have a sewer backup right before Thanksgiving. And it's all great now, and it's not because of anything that was done, not the right way or whatever, but it just seems like that's just been something, that's been an issue since day one, but it's all worked out now. So, I do appreciate being here, and I thank you so much for your past support. You folks have been supporting SCARF since before I started in 2008, even before our first program was built in 2007. So, we thank you so much for that. Just real brief, I see a few new faces here, and I did provide a handout that has some information about each of our programs on it, and at your leisure, you can look that over, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at a future date. But we do have two programs. We have Sunlight Child Advocacy Center in Eldorado, and that, very briefly, is a place where law enforcement, or bless you, or our social workers bring alleged victims of child abuse to be interviewed, and then we go ahead and follow their cases until they're closed. We work very closely with law enforcement and with Department for Children and Family, social workers, mental health counselors, the whole team. Our second program is probably the one that you are most familiar with, and that is Sunshine Children's Home, which is right down the street at 21st and Prairie Creek. Hope Community Church donated the land to us, and from that point on, we were just ready to go. And we did have many, I have been here many times, and the City Planning Commission as well, and I will tell you that through all those meetings and all the information that I had to present and questions I had to answer, there was never any pushback from anyone. And we have always felt so welcome here. I never knew what to expect, and so, we are very, very grateful for that. SCARF's basic service area includes Butler, Elk, and Greenwood Counties, which is the 13th Judicial District, but we take children from every place that needs our services. And at our, we call it the CAC, Child Advocacy Center, the majority of our children come from Butler County, the majority of our cases. At the children's home, the majority of our children still come from Butler County, but we're getting children from 59 different counties in the state. So, we opened up the CAC in March of 2007, and we have done right around 1,500 interviews in those 11 years. And we opened the children's home in October of 2014, and we are at about 1,550 children, way more than we ever anticipated. And that is because there is a lot of abuse, unfortunately, and it is also because there are very few facilities of our kind in the state, and we are just, we wish we didn't have to do what we do, but we're very glad we're able to provide those services. We always invite you for a tour. The CAC will take you three and a half minutes, and the children's home will take you a little bit longer, depending on how much time you have, but we love to show you where your funds are going and where children from your community are being served. Speaking of numbers- Speaking of numbers, we have had, since we opened in both programs, a total of close to two hundred fifty children from Andover. And I wish I could say that the need is going away, but it is not. You folks, like I said, at the Andover City Council has been giving us a generous donation since we opened eleven years ago. And started out, I believe, at about fifteen hundred dollars and the last amount we received last year was for twenty-five hundred dollars. And we are so grateful to that, for that. The majority, now that we have two programs, we kind of split it and the funds go towards our facility in Eldorado. We rent that facility and then, of course, services for our program here in Andover. We are very grant-driven. The CAC receives no fees for services, so we receive funding from seven cities in Butler County and along, you know, including you folks. And we have state grants and one federal grant. And we all know how the grant situation is. We've been very fortunate. We've been pretty steady with that. We also receive, for both programs, we receive United Way of the Plains funding and United Way of Eldorado funding. At the Children's Home, we do get money for the state, from the state. For every child, we get, for each day, we get a hundred fifteen dollars a day per child, which is not enough to cover their expenses, but it certainly helps out an awful lot. So we are grateful to have that. I wish, oh, he is here. Good. I had to say something nice and I wanted you to hear it. The Andover Police Department has been incredible. If we have an issue at the home, and I will tell you, fifteen hundred, fifty kids, we haven't had to call you that often. Maybe a handful, maybe a little bit more than a handful of times. If we have a child that we cannot meet their needs, then our first call is to Andover PD and they are right there. And they do an amazing job dealing with whatever the situation is. And, you know, I met with Captain Buchanan today about another event and I told him, I said, you know, in the evenings and on the weekends, there are just two adults in that big house there. And so it's very comforting to me, hopefully to them as well. We have peace of mind knowing that if there are any issues as far as, that we would need the police to come for, that they come right away. So, and Chief embraced it from the beginning and I was a little surprised, but very, very pleased. So we appreciate that. I could go on forever, as you all know, so I will stop. The community has totally embraced us and we hope we have been good community citizens as well. And I just want to end on a couple stories. You know, what we deal with on a daily basis is usually not very pleasant and we have our ups and downs. And so my first very short story is from the Children's Home and it was one that was very difficult to deal with. And we had a five-day-old baby come to us from the hospital with a broken leg at Thanksgiving. And the staff was unbelievable. So, you know, you're hurtbroken because that has happened, but this baby was embraced like all the, like all the children are. The staff loves babies. They, I don't think those babies ever hit a crib. But she was embraced. We were able to give her the care that she needed. And then at the Child Advocacy Center, we had a sibling group of three girls and they came to us. There was, there was abuse going on in the extended family and nobody ever believed their stories. And they came to us and they were able to tell their stories to law enforcement, to our social workers, to our people. And we followed their cases and we were following up with them and they had been placed in a foster home. Somebody, they could not believe that there was somebody there to listen and believe, listen to them and believe them. And the statement that they made that sticks out in my mind was, you know, it's really interesting. We all sit down and eat dinner together and we talk to each other. And in my mind, I'm thinking, well, yeah, but not in their world. So what you're doing is helping us do what we need to do and we are very grateful for it. And thank you very much. And any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Oh, and I guess I forgot, we're asking for more money. I forgot, I'm not, I always said, I love doing the presentations, but I forget to ask for them. I don't like asking for the money. So, anyway.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Family Life Center of Butler County.
Good evening. I'm Darla Carter and I'm the Executive Director of the Family Life Center Safe House. The Safe House is a shelter for women and children of domestic violence and sexual assault. They can come to us with nothing but the clothes on their back and it's totally free. We can provide them with clothes, personal hygiene items, food, anything that they would need. And like I said, it's totally free. We have several services that we provide for them along with resources to get them back on their feet. We have court advocacy where they can, they go over and they can file protection orders and our court advocate helps them file them, stays with them through all the court proceedings, follows up with the final protection order. Police response advocacy, if there is abusive situation where the police are called in, then, once the abuser's been removed, then our advocate comes and sees whether they need shelter, protection order, or any other, even help with filing, filling out the police statement. Sexual assault advocacy, if they need to go to have a sexual assault kit done, we can accompany them and be there to support them through all of the process. We have support group, which meets every Tuesday at six-thirty for anybody. It's not just women in shelter. It's for anybody that wants to come and have the, that needs the support group. We have a teen dating violence program. This has been going on for about five years. We go into the high schools and do an interactive activity that has, from these real-life scenarios. There's about six characters. They go through the characters and then they decide on where they go next, whether it is church, school, parents, law enforcement. They make the decisions and then after the, they go through the scenarios, then they have a question and answer. And this brings out a lot of questions that the students have that maybe they feel comfortable in a setting where they can just talk in general and not have to reveal that maybe they needed that help themselves. Then community education, that's what I do. I go out and try and give presentations to ladies groups, civic groups, whatever, to educate people on domestic violence. The handout that I gave you, in 2017, we sheltered thirty-five women and eighteen children. You'll notice that that's down from 2016. It's not that we had less domestic violence. It's that we are seeing the clients stay longer in shelter due to affordable and adequate They come to us with usually nothing. And so for them to get back on their feet then and find employment and housing, and it's hard. The low-income housing, there are waiting lists of six, eight, twelve months to get into low-income housing. So if they go in and find a job at McDonald's that's minimum wage, that is not going to pay five, six hundred dollars a month rent. So there are agencies that we partner with that help and we get a few dollars to help with paying rent or security deposits. So that's why we're seeing them stay longer in shelter till they can get on their feet. Our teen dating violence program has gone into all of the schools except for three in our area. In July, we acquired Elk and Chautauqua County also, so we're going down there and getting the resources and finding out what their needs are down there. So we have been, the shelter has been full for, I don't remember the last time that we were not full. So we have been helping the women and children, and all victims. It's not just women and children, but they are the ones that are in shelter, but men too, with any kind of protection orders and anything they need. I appreciate the money that you, the City of Andover gives us that helps us with the crisis hotline that we have that so it can be answered and help and on for twenty-four seven, and that's what the shelter is. And that's what we're using the money for. I'm sorry, I just kind of blanked there. So if you have any questions, then I'd be happy to answer them.
I've got a question. Do you think the, I noticed the unemployment rate for last year was lower, like three-point four percent for Butler County. Do you think that has anything to do with the lower numbers?
The lower number, and that could very well be. I don't, I haven't really done a lot of statistics about, I know that women that are in domestic violence situations, if he is put in jail, then we also counsel them when they want to know, have no contacters. Because once they are arrested, then they go to jail and there's a no-contact order put in place. Well, for them to get that, or we get calls to have that no-contact order lifted and we go over steps and do some advocacy for them. Most of the reasons why we hear that they need the no-contact order lifted is because of financial reasons. So financial plays a big, big part in it. And then, and since unemployment is down, then that might be a little bit that, maybe knock on wood, it is getting better.
Thanks for what you do.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. We will move on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda. That's items nine-point-one through nine-point-one-three. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, vacation case VA two thousand eighteen dash zero one. Can you give us some background information here, please?
This public hearing is regarding a small segment of a sanitary sewer easement on the USD three-eighty-five Central Campus to accommodate the expansion of the Sunflower Elementary School building. There are easements about that campus. This one in particular for sewer runs all the way from Andover High School over to Sunflower Elementary School. The intent is to vacate a portion of the physical sewer line and the corresponding easement, install a new manhole at the end of the line, the end of the easement, and then reroute the sewer around the new building location to reconnect the building.
All right. This time I'll open a public hearing and ask if anybody would like to speak. I mean, I will close the public hearing. What's your pleasure, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Troy.
Make a motion to approve the vacation of a portion of a twenty-foot sanitary sewer easement on the USD three-eighty-five property as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Troy, second by Mike, to approve vacation case two thousand eighteen zero one as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Prairie Creek Phase Two, you have before you tonight the plans for the water, sanitary sewer, and water main plans. Now, this is the neighborhood that is, or the addition that is on the west side of Prairie Creek. Is that right?
Yeah, Steve Anderson, city engineer. This is on the west side of Thirteenth, across from where the single-family homes are. There's forty-one lots, I believe, that are two-family lots. For whatever it's worth, I did notice a sold sign, the real estate sign today when I drove by. This particular project is a combination of three petitions or assessed projects. The first two, water and sanitary sewer, are internal improvements within the streets and lots serving subdivision. The other one is off-site and is an extension of a water line down the north side of Thirteenth Street North. That's necessary to connect them to the existing system. The first two projects are a hundred percent assessed. The water main and Thirteenth Street is more of an arterial or trunk line and the petition calls for a split or cost share between the developer, sixty-two percent, and city at large for the balance. So the engineer for the developer has asked for plan acceptance and authorized the bid in a couple of weeks.
This neighborhood has city water, right? Since it's east, west.
It's on the west side. It's outside of Water District Five. It's on Wichita Andover Water System.
So making sure. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, assuming there are no other issues, I would move to accept the plans and authorize the bidding of the sanitary sewer, water lines, and water main improvements for Prairie Creek Phase Two.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Grave, to accept these plans and authorize the bidding of the aforementioned utilities as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve.
Okay, this is the street paving improvements for Prairie Creek Phase Two. The water line, sewer, and grading has already been performed. This is an extension of the single-family lots to the east of the present development. Bids are open today for the paving and the low.
Sorry, did you, I don't mean to stop you. You said Prairie Creek Phase Two again, or is this Phase Three?
I'm sorry. I said two, I meant three.
Okay.
It's confusing and I'm confused. So anyway, the bids were open today. There were a couple of ad alternates that the developer and their engineer wanted to price and test, but they do not want to go with those, so the bottom of the bid tabulation is to be ignored. And the low bid for the base bid was offered by AIPAC of Kansas for four hundred, four thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. So the staff recommendation is to accept the bid and authorize the mayor to sign.
I have a question. Obviously, this neighborhood has expanded to the east and a proposed entrance into this phase of the development. Thirteenth Street has not been improved to that entrance, is that correct?
That is correct. The last quarter mile along that subdivision frontage has not been improved.
Yeah, I know this body has discussed this issue before about trying to resolve an issue, a petition issue between the developer and the surrounding landowners regarding Thirteenth Street improvements. To my understanding, there's nothing, no agreement has been reached yet or no valid petitions have been submitted.
There are some extenuating circumstances. We've discussed this internally and offered a course forward for the developer on preparing another petition different than the one that was last presented. At the same time, there is some right-of-way acquisition in progress that pertains to this project, but it's on, beyond the control of the developer. And so I've asked them to wait before they present that petition to anyone else till we acquire that right-of-way.
Fair enough. So you're of the opinion that we should accept the low bid this evening?
I think we've already allowed the progress of the water and sewer to go ahead and I think the developer is anxious to get that done. I also understand, and I will stop short of being a hundred percent sure of this, but I think the developer very much wants to get this petition. but I think the developer very much wants to get this petition resolved for 13th Street because he doesn't want to have to load the specials for that into a smaller area or number of lots. So he has an incentive to get this wound up when we, um, so that we can get that assessed, that petition covering the lots that are in this next phase.
Do you have any anticipatory date of when we might see some resolve on 13th Street?
Well, the soonest would be the next council meeting. If we get the right-of-way document signed from some other people, I think we could see something as soon as the next council meeting. I can't guarantee that.
Fair enough.
I guess the one thing we should do, Mr. Mayor, is try to again encourage the developer to communicate with the neighboring property and start discussions on that. Uh, because that obviously is, would be a critical part of this, is to get the neighboring property to sign any petition, so.
You know, I mean, we've asked that. We've been talking about this for months. I, I, I'm a little disappointed, not that I wanna, I, I don't wanna hold up their prog- progress here. And especially with the right-of-way acquisition in the mix here. I certainly don't wanna cause any bobbles, but I, I would appreciate it if it was relayed to the developer, who is not present nor is his agent again this evening. Which is also a, a problem in my opinion. I wish somebody would relay to them the necessity of getting something resolved here because, um, everything's gonna come to a screaming halt if that isn't resolved, so.
Let me make, uh, or offer one qualifying statement. We've outlined a course of action, uh, that, that's dependent upon the contact with the neighbors, and so even if they bring us, um, an answer or progress next week, that does not mean it's necessarily resolved. So let me be very clear on that, that we may be back to the drawing board at that point in time.
You understand our hesitancy then, at least mine, of approving, um, even more improvements within the neighborhood when we haven't resolved the access.
Well, to that end, we have, uh, the way we set our contracts up is you've got over a month to a month and a half to award. So if you have a reluctance, we still can hold that bid, the low bid that we have here, and vote to award at a later date.
How long is the, uh, low bid good for?
The bid bond holds for 60 days, practically speaking, a month and a half to allow the permanent bonds to be put in place.
Perhaps I'm speaking out of turn here, but, um, you know, we've already approved, um, previously what the, the water, the sanitary sewer, well, not the water, but the sanitary sewer and-
The projects, water, sewer and grading.
Right. Uh, we've already, uh, approved those, so this obviously would be the last one, but it seems to me maybe we got the cart before the horse here in, in this particular development or subdivision, and thinking that there would be some great resolution happened quickly on the 13th Street portion of it, but that hasn't been the case. And I'm just questioning why they're dragging their feet. And I know you can't answer that, and I'm not really asking that of you. I would ask that of the applicant if he was bothered to be here this evening. I'm in, I'm inclined to, uh, table these bids and see what can be resolved in the next couple of weeks. But that, that's, I, I don't want to interfere with your right-of-way exposition problem, so.
I, I would simply ask, uh, city engineer, what negative impact, if any, would we have by deferring this to the next meeting? This, uh, issue on Phase Three?
Well, from what we've heard from the developer, they're essentially saying they're running out of lots in the previously developed area. So the sooner they can get finished lots-
Wouldn't this maybe apply some pressure to them to get-
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, that they have, they have an incentive because of the, the way they want the street cost assessed to their property to resolve this.
So, let me try to ask you again. I did the first one very poorly, and I'm sure I will again. What, what is your, uh, position if we were to defer this matter to the next city council meeting? What, what-
All, all that would be, would be a two-week delay in when they start construction.
So the, the bids would still be valid and so forth? Okay.
Maybe I misunderstood you. Are you saying if we, if we approve the, uh, the paving bids, that is their incentive? Or is it the other way around?
No, I'm saying that they've got six weeks to two months to build the paving project, and then they're gonna wanna start single-family homes, and at that time, they're gonna wanna sell those lots to builders. So they have an incentive, if they want to get that street assessed to their development, they need to do that before they sell those lots.
But procedurally, they could approve the bid tonight, and then you could hold on to it for, for the mayor not to sign it for the next, next days, correct?
I believe we could do that.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know if that's possible. If the council, if the governing body, if the council approves it, I have to sign it, or after a certain period of time, it just becomes effective anyway.
Whether you can, you can accept it tonight and we can delay the notice of award, or you can delay the approval that accomplishes the same thing. We just need the direction on what you wanna do.
I think, I'm confused too now. I thought I had it, I think the question that's being asked is, do we motivate them to get the things done that need to be done the most by approving this tonight or by tabling it tonight?
Honestly, I'm not sure I know the answer to that. I, I don't know that it's harmful either way or helpful either way.
And basically, we're, we are waiting on the right-of-way acquisition of 13th on one property owner to the south.
Yes, and I'm, I'm saying that's an internal staff decision that, that I've recommended, that they, they wait before they go any farther until we get that right-of-way.
Does this affect their project if they don't get that achieved? I mean, are they gonna not want to do this paving project?
If we don't, if we don't get what achieved?
If we, if we, if they don't get the right-of-way and all the road thing worked out the way they want, is this going to prevent them from going ahead?
I don't believe-
With this development?
I, no, no, it won't.
So what we're saying is, if you approve this, we've approved all the internal improvements to this neighborhood without addressing the extension of 13th Street as it should be. That's why I alluded to, we put the cart in front of the horse, a little bit.
So you're recommending that we defer this to the next council meeting?
You know, I, I want this neighborhood to be successful. And I think history shows, um, history shows us that we have been more than kind, more than, um, we've stuck our necks out, matter of fact. Uh, when this neighborhood first started, it was just, just prior to the housing collapse of 2008, and we held on to these internal improvements and temp notes for, I think, almost four years before we certified him, just to give him that extra kick maybe he needed to get out of that crisis mode and to sell some lots, try and move some houses. And, and it worked, and it worked. But we've gone on our way to, to help this developer and, and this development. I don't see the reciprocation right now. I don't understand, I don't understand what the holdup is, um, on improving 13th Street.
I don't think we're harming the development of this project. I don't wanna harm it. I think the bid's probably valid and, and no problem, but I don't see a harm, and therefore I move to defer item number 12 till the next city council meeting.
I'll second. Motion by CR, second by Mike to defer, uh, awarding the award for Prairie Creek paving, uh, Phase Three paving bids as presented.
I, I guess I have a question on the motion. Should we defer it to the next meeting or defer it until what we're trying to have accomplished is accomplished?
What, what can we legally do here, JT?
Uh, just pretty much whatever you'd like to do. I, I, I think, I think that, uh, tabling it until the next meeting brings the item back up and, and you'll, you'll be able to, uh, address progress at that point and have the option to defer it again if you want to. Um, there is a point at which the bids will no longer be valid. And see the forms on these myself, although I've reviewed the forms the city used, and Steve assures me that the bids are good for 60 days. Uh, the reason why he uses a month and a half is 'cause there's some time to get a contract together uh, after the notice of award is given. So, um, I, I think if you're prone to defer it, that the motion to defer it to the next council meeting so that it stays on your agenda and, and, uh, you get whatever attention it is you're looking for is probably the best option if you're going to table the item.
I'd also state, we haven't voted for this, but my additional comment would be, I would strongly encourage your communication to the engineer, whomever, and that they be present at the next meeting so we can-
Yes, sir.
Try to get this hammered out.
CR, would you, uh, you made that original motion. Would you mind amending that to, uh, state that it's simply deferred until our next regularly scheduled council meeting?
So moved.
Would you amend your second?
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't that what it was to begin with?
Alright. Is there issues? Okay, so we have an amended motion, um, by CR, amended second by Mike to table, uh, the awarding of, uh, paving for Prairie Creek Phase Three until our next regularly scheduled council meeting, which is- to March 13th. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number 13, uh, we have a firefighter federal grant, perhaps?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to tell you about this. The Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program is a grant program that Andover has used successfully several times over the past. Fortunately, the federal government decided to open the 2017 grant. Unfortunately, they did what they, uh, have typically done over the last four or five years, and it was opened within a few days of their announcement, and it's already closed. So I'm coming to, as, as the mayor sometimes says, I'm coming to ask for permission on something I've already done. I apologize for that. Um, I do have a way out if you decide that you do not want to do this. Uh, let me explain what we've, what, uh, the grant request in, includes. In the, uh, 2019 CIP, we have, uh, included a new tanker truck. And, uh, we are able to apply to purchase a tanker truck with the assistance of the federal grant. So the vehicle grant portion, uh, would go to that tanker truck for a total of $220,000, and our match would be $20,000 for that truck. The equipment, we're also allowed to apply for equipment. The equipment side of the grant, uh, would pay for new radios and pagers, 33 of each. Uh, each year we spend a little bit of money to replace a few radios and pagers because the current, not these, these are the, this is the new model, but the, the other black ones that you see us carrying are no longer supported by the company that made them, which means that whatever parts have been made are the last of the parts. So we're still able to get them repaired today, but with 35 units, we're trying to get them cycled out. As they start to fail, they're harder and harder to get repaired. So those 33 radios and pagers would cost a total project cost of $224,000 and change. And again, our match would be around $20,000. So if we were fortunate enough to be awarded both grants, then we would be, uh, in the receipt of about $440,000, and it would cost us around $40,000. Those are approximate numbers. The, uh, the actual numbers are in your packet. Uh, if you would decide that you, uh, would not like us to pursue these, there is no way to remove ourselves from the grant. However, when the grant comes, the grant always has to come to you, and you have to approve us taking the grant or not. So we would have opportunity at that time to say that we're not interested in the grant funding.
I will say, counsel, that, uh, Chief Russell did inform the city administrator, myself, about this, and we did, we'll go ahead and authorize him to submit those bids because that was a timely, very timely issue. Uh, I believe I asked you at the time, but I don't remember the answers. You got the $40,000 match somewhere, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure. You guys have been extremely successful at, at getting these grants. I mean, you've got a ton of them.
Yes, Lieutenant Smith has done an absolutely fantastic job.
I don't know what he, how he writes these, or where he learned to do that, but he's been very successful. So I hope you are successful, but I guess you're wanting the, uh, the council's formal permission to-
Yes, sir.
Continue on something you've already done.
Mr. Mayor, uh, due to the extreme ex post facto efforts on this, we should defer this for another 30 minutes. Would that be a problem?
No, sir. You're the boss.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to authorize AFR to apply for the federal grant funding through the Assistance to Firefighter Grant Program as already presented.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Brian to approve the ga- grant application as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14. New logo.
Yes. Um, you'll see on the big screen, Mr. Mayor and counsel, this is the revised version, not the page 113 of 20, 125. Pretend that's not up there. For the Capital Federal Amphitheater logo, we brought the first version to you at your January workshop. We also brought it to the CBB on that day. Um, we gathered input and gave it back to Capital Federal's marketing team, and they revised it. Staff feels that they really took all that feedback and incorporated it well. They curved at the top of the roof line. Um, they put Andover in the medallions. The reason it is below Capital Federal Amphitheater instead of above is it did appear, when they did it the other way, that it was the Andover Capital Federal Amphitheater, which is not the official name that we have in our, our contract. And so putting that down below made that just a little bit more clear. But I think staff feels that this has, um, taken all the feedback and really incorporated it, and we are getting to a point where we really need to start branding. So I really hope you approve it, but what is your will?
I'm ready to make a motion to approve the Capital Federal Amphitheater logo as presented.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Greg to approve the proposed logo. Further discussion.
I wanna hear Troy's comments.
Oh, my gosh.
Go ahead.
They absolutely did what we asked them to do, which is wonderful, but, um, I look at it, and as you mentioned, we're gonna do a lot of branding, um, of this, and we're gonna use this in all kinds of ways. And to me, I, I, I appreciate the work that their designers did, but to me, it's not anywhere cle- anywhere close to being adequate for a logo that should represent us and was, you know, a keystone now of our city. Um, so there's no way I could vote for this. And I wish that we had had, uh, them, or that they had fought to go to an outside, you know, group or company that, that actually designs logos, um, for a living, and I think that we would've come up with a pretty darn amazing, um, mark for us. But, uh, there's no way I could vote for this as is. And, and not, nothing, you know, directly against the designers perhaps, but, um, it's just, I don't feel like this adequately represents us and our city and the amphitheater, nor do I think it, it represents Capital Federal for what they're trying to accomplish either.
I don't think it's that bad.
Sorry, wait a minute, my mic was not on. I'm gonna have to start over.
Well, and this, this isn't a forever logo anyway, because it's only the, the 10-year period that it's Capital Federal, correct?
Unless they renew.
Right, well, unless they choose to renew, and if they wanna change a logo or whatever.
This is gonna be so successful that there's no way they wouldn't renew. I mean, this is, this amphitheater is gonna be, it's gonna rock this entire area. And, and I, and I fully think Capital Federal, unless they leave, is gonna stay with it. And as I said, not on the microphone, since that, that's my assumption, again, there's just no way I could, this doesn't represent- just no way I could, this doesn't represent me, it doesn't represent my city as far as I'm concerned, nor, nor anything that, that I would, I would think was amazing. Did I answer you? Is that what you wanted to hear?
I saw you on there.
Oh, my goodness.
Kind of twitching there, so. Okay, so, we do have a motion by Caroline, a second by Greg, to approve this logo. You disapprove of.
It seems to be a little much. That's, that's my comment. There's a lot there.
I don't know. I don't think it's that bad. But you vote to your heart's content. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, there's three and three.
Ah, lordy. As I mentioned, I didn't think it was that bad. Do I even have to vote on this? I do? No, I don't.
I'll second that motion.
It's, it's approved. We'll move on to item 15. Somebody would be so kind as to recess the city council meeting and call to order a meeting of the Public Building Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Greg, to recess the city council meeting and call to order a meeting of the Public Building Commission. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. President.
Thank you. I call a Tuesday, February 27, 2018, Public Building Commission meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call to my far left.
Brunch one, Commissioner.
Caroline Hale, Building Commissioner.
Troy Taber, Commissioner.
Ben Lawrence, Commissioner.
Clark C.R. Nelson, President.
Greg Schneider, Commissioner.
Mike Warrington, Commissioner.
Item three, the minutes of the Public Building Commission for January 30, 2018. I assume everybody has reviewed the minutes, and do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We got a motion by Troy and a second by Mike to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, Capital Federal Amphitheater, Central and Park Road Lodge, 4.1 fiber installation for amphitheater and lodge communications, and we have a special guest here this evening.
Yes, thank you.
You got a crack at getting something here.
Well, what we've got is that we've come up with a lot of technical needs between, well, out at the amphitheater, and in order to support that, we need to run some fiber communications. Basically, we've got the big signboards out there we're going to be running. We've got sound system, we've got security, and cameras and stuff like that. And in order to do that, we need some fiber run between the two, so we've got the adequate capacity to do that. What we've proposed is to pull some redundant fiber in there, so we've asked for the larger 24-strand pole for $8,636, I believe was the dollar amount, and that allows for either future expansion or potential of breakage or outage of those in the future not having to go back and repull. Fiber's very difficult to repull once you've got it. It's, it's a one-time deal, so we'd really like to get that pulled in and have that in there so that we can get all of this taken care of. Basically, the goal is to split the funds between Cap Federal sponsorship dollars, and I'm going to eat the rest of it in my IT budget, and we'll just figure out how we go from there.
Are we talking a total of about $10,000, then? It's either go with the 12 inch or the?
The write-up I gave you is a little confusing. I meant to have that as showing you the thinking going on. There were basically two options for fiber pole, the 5,000 and the 8,000. It's either or. Rick has agreed to get the Parks guys to put that $1,200 box in the ground, which is a halfway point in the pole to reduce the amount of tension for the pole, and he's going to do that out of park funds and just get that one to happen. So, basically, all I'm asking for is that $8,600, $8,636 line item to be approved so that we can go get that fiber cable pulled.
I appreciate that explanation. It was a little fuzzy on paper.
I thought of that after I put that in there, that I was giving you my working notes, and I should have written it up a little bit more clearly. Sorry about that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve staff to proceed with the vendor installation of the 24-strand fiber between the lodge and the amphitheater at a cost not to exceed $8,636.
Second.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Brian? Motion by Caroline, second by Brian, to approve the motion as presented. Were there questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have two questions. And I already forgot what the second one was, but where in the lodge are you putting your equipment? In the offices' location there?
Yes, basically, they will pull in about midway on the west side in the basement and run up over. There's a office, the little closet area between the kitchen and-
Right, that's where it's going?
Yeah, we've got all of the security stuff already put in there. We've got the communication stuff moved to there, and we want all the rest of it to terminate in there. Any additional activity we do, we'll just run copper within the building and locate everything else from there.
Right, okay, thank you.
Is that it? Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Anything further? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and to proceed back to the city council meeting.
Second.
Do we have a motion by Greg?
Second.
And a second by Troy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Amen.
He thought you made the right. Actually, you could have.
Well, I could have.
You could have. All right, I guess we're down to member items, right? Brian, you want to start us off?
I'm good.
That was a negative. All right. Caroline?
Actually, I, I have some, something that I think maybe I'll do it off-camera, and I would just like to talk with Police Chief Keller after the meeting, please?
You're in trouble.
Not the right sweater tonight.
Troy.
Nothing for me tonight.
C.R.
Just one comment here. I, I wanted to thank Susan. You've just, you've done so many things that aren't recognized. For example, the swearing-in of the firefighters this week. You're always above and beyond, and you take care of things that we just assume we're going to always get taken care of, and I sincerely appreciate it. Nothing further.
Greg?
Nothing, sir.
Mike?
Thank you for my new badge.
Can you get in the building now?
That's right. Yeah, that's it.
Uh, let's see. Staff have anything else? Nada? Well, let's get out of here.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.